And welcome. The time is now 7:00 PM and I hereby call the regular session of the Rockdale County Board of Education into order. We sincerely appreciate your presence this evening and your continued dedication to supporting our mission. Your engagement reflects a shared commitment to fostering excellence in education throughout our community. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Shawn Johnson, Principal of DLS Sims Elementary School, along with our distinguished scholar, Mr. Ashton Gibson, Jewel Holmes, Amaya Clinton, Madison Bird, and Victoria Hossa. This evening they will share an inspiring message entitled, "We Are the Future." Following their presentation, we kindly ask our scholars to remain with us to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Turn your microphone.
Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, esteemed board members, Superintendent Chester. I am Shawn Johnson, the very proud principal of Sims Elementary School, and it is my distinct honor to introduce several remarkable scholars from our Junior Beta Club. Tonight, they will present a powerful and heartfelt poem entitled, "We Are the Future," a collaborative piece composed by several students at Sims Elementary School. Their words reflect the hope, resilience, and brilliance that define our scholars and the promise they hold for tomorrow. Please join me in welcoming these young voices as they share their inspiration with you.
We walk through the doors with hope in our eyes, vision for the dreams that stretch to the skies. With books in our hands and hearts full of cheer, we grow every day, year after year.
We ask, we explore, we wonder, we try, we stumble, get up, and reach for the sky. Our voices are strong, our spirits are bright, we're learning to lead, to shine, and to right.
Thanks to our teachers who guide us each day and families at home who show us the way. And thanks to the board, we just want to say you help build the path where scholars can play.
You support our school, our dreams, and our growth. You stay with our teacher and help us both. With every decision, you help us to soar. You open up minds and unlock every door. We are tomorrow, we're bold, brave, and true, with kindness and courage in all that we do. So listen and look and take pride in this view. The future is bright because we are it too.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so very much, Sims Elementary School students. Do I hear a motion to approve that Janice presented?
Second, Justin.
A motion to approve that Janet has been made by Vice Chair Janie Jones and seconded by Mr. Justin Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by 7-0 vote. Next, please join me extending a warm welcome to Ms. Kimberly Dyer, Principal of Davis Middle School. This evening, Ms. Dyer will share an overview showcasing her school's programs, accomplishment, and ongoing commitment to student success.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Bless you. I do want to first of all say good evening to board chairwoman Sandra Jackson Lett, the esteemed members of our Board of Education, Superintendent Chester, and all of our guests. My name is Kimberly Dyer, affectionately known as PPD, the proud principal of the General Ray Davis Middle School. It is with great pride and deep respect and heartfelt joy that I stand before you tonight to celebrate a milestone that speaks volumes about the shared commitment of excellence, our middle school's 20th year anniversary. So tonight, I have the esteemed pleasure and privilege to share with you a visual presentation, which is a visual tribute to two decades of integrity, growth, and impact. It honors our students, past, present, and future, our educators, families, and even the leaders who have shaped this journey, and it reflects the values instilled not only by our namesake, General Ray Davis, but also embodies the credentials of the mission and vision of Rockdale County Public Schools. General Ray Davis was a man of courage, integrity, grit, and honor, and unwavering service. We are profoundly grateful for your leadership as the members of our board and our superintendent, and we appreciate your support, which have been instrumental in building the foundation we stand on today. So please, join me now as we turn our attention to tonight's visual presentation.
Hello, my name is Joshua Buchanan. I'm an eighth grader here at General Ray Davis Middle School. This spring, our students had the opportunity to compete in the county and state levels of the science fair. We had the most student projects in the county to qualify as grand champions. Those students are Jewel Williams, Haseeb Ohak, myself, Spencer Fortson, Chloe Medbury, and Emily Quenka. We also had three out of four Thermo Fisher nominations come from Davis. Thermo Fisher acknowledges the top 10% of students that will go on to submit their projects for national consideration. Those students are Jewel Williams, Haseeb Ohak, and Spencer Fortson. Finally, Haseeb gets special congratulations for earning the Lemison Early Inventors Award, which is presented to this top project at the middle school level. I was lucky enough to go to the state level last year where I got first place honors as well as Thermo Fisher Award for my survey on weather forecasts.
Hi, this is Mrs. Fender. I am a teacher at General Ray Davis Middle School where I am the department chair of Social Studies. I am also the lead advisor for the National Junior Honors Society as well as our civics team. The National Junior Honors Society is service oriented, where we help out our community, and we're very much aligned with our senior citizen community as well as our gardening project, where we help to feed the hungry. Our civics team, we are coming off a very high note on last year where we won best delegation. We also won the McCutcheon Award, where that is for having the best delegates. We also had several bills to pass both houses, House and Senate, and we are now being tapped as the middle school to beat this year. We are having a very strong team to lead us in 2025, 2026, and we're excited to represent Rockdale County.
Hi, we're the fine arts department here at General Ray Davis Middle School. I'm Mrs. Fonbaugh, and last year at the Davis Middle School chorus, we had a really great year. They got superior ratings at LGPE. We had students participate in solo ensemble. They also got superior ratings, and we also had students participate in all state.
I am Angie Dollar. I'm the strings teacher here at General Ray Davis Middle School. We also scored superiors in sight reading and our performance at LGPE, and I have students who participate in our community group, the Rockdale Community Orchestra. So they have many opportunities to play their instrument throughout the year.
And my name is John Williams. I'm the band director here at General Ray Davis Middle School. We too received superior ratings at LGPE. We actually got a perfect score on our score sheet this year. This marks the 18th year that we have earned a superior rating at LGPE. The only two years that we did not were the two pandemic years. Last year, we also had a student to make the all-state band, earning the second highest score on trombone, being the number two trombonist in the state of Georgia. And we also had the highest number of students to participate in this year's county honor band. So we are the General Ray Davis Music Department.
Hello, I'm Katie King, the art teacher at General Ray Davis Middle School. I am super proud to be part of the 20th anniversary, celebrating our school. And as the art teacher, over the last 20 years, we've had many artistic achievements with our very talented art students. We've had students go overseas to foreign countries and meet ambassadors because of their artworks. We've had students here locally that have got to meet presidents from Georgia, Jimmy Carter, because of their artistic achievements. We've had students win state and national art competitions and learn inside and outside the classroom because of everything we provide them here in Rockdale County Public Schools and most importantly, at General Ray Davis Middle School. So thank you for 20 years of support in the visual arts classroom here at Davis. We have amazing kids doing amazing things that are grown up now, and we have amazing kids doing amazing things right now in our classrooms.
So we do want to thank you for helping us to celebrate. As we launch this year's 20th anniversary celebration, we will be celebrating throughout the entire school year. And so in closing, as we recognize this visual reflection of the past 20 years of excellence, I do want to again extend a great and sincere gratitude to our Board of Education for your support, as well as Superintendent Chester, you are one of our biggest cheerleaders. We thank you for your enduring support and your belief in our school. The legacy of General Ray Davis reminds us that true leadership is defined by integrity, perseverance, grit, and service to others. So we value this, and we continue to utilize these principles to guide our school community. We are proud of what we've accomplished. We are equally inspired by what lies ahead. With your continued partnership, we look forward to the next 20 years of innovation, achievement, partnership, and we look forward to making sure that we carry a legacy that uplifts every student that walks through our doors. So as we say, we will continue to soar to the highest heights the Davis way. To do so, we demonstrate self-control, on-task behavior, appropriate attitudes, and responsible actions. Thank you for allowing us to share this celebratory presentation with you tonight, and again, you are cordially invited to all of our celebratory events. I do have a small token of appreciation for our board members and our superintendent. This does conclude our presentation. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dyer, so very much, and we do appreciate Davis soaring the way they soar in this community. Okay. Because they're passing down. Superintendent Chair says Ms. Dyer had passed out her presentation. At this time, please introduce the cabinet member who will be presenting the district highlights.
And thank you so much, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, and good evening, Vice Chairwoman Jones, board members, and to our guests in attendance. I'd like to call up at this time Mrs. Cindy Ball, our chief of community impact, and she is going to share her presentation this evening.
Thank you and good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, our board members, superintendent, and our guests. It's always fun to have a full room on our regular session meetings, and I am going to start just by sharing some good news. And the first slide here, let me give you a little bit of background before we watch this short video. The Georgia Acre Collective, or Advancing Agriculture, Community, Resilience, and Equity Through Values-Based Procurement, centers on garnering food purchasing commitments from Atlanta-area anchor institutions while shifting procurement to producers that share these institutions' values. The Georgia Acre Collective's Local Food Incentive School Pilot Program, launched in 2023 and led by the Common Market Southeast, is providing that fresh local food belongs in school cafeterias and on state economic agendas. In just two years, the pilot has funneled nearly $128,000 into Georgia's local food economy, connecting 37 small-scale farms with school cafeterias, and delivering 67,000 pounds of locally sourced food, serving over 74,000 students across three districts, Atlanta Public Schools, Marietta City Schools, and Rockdale County Public Schools. We had CJ Hicks, JH House, and Peaks Chapel Elementary Schools in this pilot program. We're sorry that it has come to an end. We're hoping that they find the funding to continue because it's really a great program. So with that, Michael, if you will start the video.
Eat, learn, graduate. The ultimate goal is to graduate. In order to do that, you need to learn. In order to learn, you need to eat. When you're feeding, you know, thousands of kids in a day and within a very constricted amount of time during lunch, using a lot of frozen products is very typical for a school nutrition program. Understanding how to work with small farmers, it would take a lot of work and a lot of time for me as a school nutrition director to even begin. It has been such a blessing and really beneficial to be able to work with the common market, you know, because they help us and they teach us along the way.
The Acre Collective's Local Food Incentive Pilot Program is an initiative to reduce the financial barrier to including local food in school meals, and also provide additional technical assistance and resources to school districts to make that possible. We've had wonderful partnerships with Marietta City Schools, Rockdale County Public Schools, and Atlanta Public Schools.
Sometimes trying something new can be a little bit overwhelming. It was nice to have the Common Market kind of walk us through and just make sure that we're growing our locally grown menu items. I think whenever you can serve things that not only benefit the community but also benefit the students, that's really exciting.
We definitely want to involve and engage students in a process. Common Market has been a great partner. We've done several taste tests. The students love the variety.
It's sweet, it's healthy, and I can really just taste the strawberry.
I can tell it's fresh, and fresh food is like the best thing.
We know the students are feeling invested and excited about the food, and we know that that translates to staff enthusiasm and excitement for the food too. So we have offered culinary trainings to the school nutrition departments, and we've seen staff and administration participation in the school meals increase as a result of new recipes being incorporated into the menu.
I think what makes this program particularly unique is that it's not just about funding. Marietta City Schools, for the first time ever, started cooking with chicken that was coming in raw instead of precooked, and we worked with them on culinary trainings and food safety training so their staff could feel comfortable preparing that food.
Our staff has been really excited to be able to serve more variety to our students. To know that when you're in a district that is high-free and reduced and our students aren't depending on our meals, you know, for it to be a wholesome meal, that's very impactful. It's impactful for nutrition, but it's also impactful to the local economy.
More money going into farmers' pockets and into their local communities.
I'm very passionate about the schools. We get so much positive feedback from the teachers, from the students. The students will say, until your lettuce was in the cafeteria, we didn't even want to eat in the cafeteria. Now we have actual food that tastes good. I think every school cafeteria should have as much fresh food from small to medium farms that you can access.
Being able to produce food that is going into the school nutrition program that is within our own state is truly that labor of love. We're helping our local farmers, we're helping our local economy, we're serving our students. All those are win-win wins.
So again, our students and our staff at our three pilot schools have, sorry, I might be a little loud, don't get it, have benefited from weekly produce deliveries of seasonal apples, strawberries, blueberries, sweet potatoes, fresh collards, kale, oranges, romaine lettuce, and more. So we're hoping that we're able to continue, be part of a continuation of this program once they find their feet in their funding. And with that, I'll share a few other good news items we have this week. We have 168 students in our district have been named AP Scholars. This is, we were in the 140s last year, so this is very exciting. And as you can see, we also have increased by 38% the number of students scoring three or higher on these AP exams. Very proud of our students. We recently named our three finalists for District Teacher of the Year, and next week we will name the District Teacher of the Year. Our finalists, we visited with surprise visits, and you can see our board members came along. We had Danielle Stansel of CJ Hicks Elementary School, Gretchen Galt of Lorraine Elementary School, and Latonya Saunders of Memorial Middle School. So we're very proud to have them represent their schools and Rockdale County Public Schools, and we will reveal the winner. Stay tuned. If you want to watch live, we will stream it live. For everyone who's behind me, you can tune in and see who our winner is next Thursday night. Salem High School had their annual 9/11 ceremony. Again, this is in remembrance of the 9/11 attacks in New York and Philadelphia and the Pentagon, and we really are proud of our students and how they carry this memory through so many years later. And Grandparents' Day, Grandparents' Day, you can see a collage of photos from Grandparents' Day throughout the district. I'm sure some of you in this room got to enjoy that. And our Friday Night Lights, again, a collage of photos from around the county, and you can see our board members attending football games, and you know, the season is well on its way. We recently had a visit from South Carolina State University. They visited the Rockdale County High School students and the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology, and dropped off $1.4 million in scholarships. They can come back anytime they want to drop another million, right? We're very proud to recognize a community member for their giving back to our students and families. Our community and student support department has partnered with Conyers Best Laundry to help provide needed laundry services to families in need, particularly those who are experiencing homelessness. So we're very thankful for Conyers Best Laundry. Our monthly office wall art is provided by JH House Elementary. And it is Attendance Awareness Month, and actually, our CPS also recognized August as Attendance Awareness Month, so we're kind of dragging this out. But the National Attendance Awareness Month is September, and our social workers have, for some schools, Hightower Trail, Memorial Middle, and Heritage High School have provided an art contest opportunity for our students. So we look forward to recognizing the winners of that coming up. September is also Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and before I share a little bit about what our counselors... And before I share a little bit about what our counselors share throughout this month, I do want to share this PSA, or Public Service Announcement, that was made by, excuse me, our students last year. Michael Browning from Heritage High School, Matt Dawson from Heritage, Kennedy Sales from our Magnet Program, Reagan McCollers from Heritage, a former Heritage student, Miles Memes, and Mackenzie Tresvant, also from Heritage, are in this video. And I will say that this also won a 2025 Silver Telly Award. So, Michael, if you will play this video.
September is National Suicide Prevention Month.
Suicide is the third-leading cause of death among 15- to 24-year-olds.
Do you feel hopeless?
Suicide does not discriminate.
If you or someone is experiencing a mental health crisis, or text 988.
No judgment, just help.
You matter.
Reach out to a mental health professional.
Your life matters.
Again, we're very proud of our students for sharing that message during September and really that message throughout the year. So some of the things that our counselors do during Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, at the elementary level, our students are reminded that they are enough, and they have lessons of resiliency. The school counselors present lessons using Quaver on self-esteem. Counselors may read the book, "When Things Aren't Going Right, Go Left", and discuss optimism, overcoming adversity, forgiving your, sorry, forging your own path with students. And students are reminded who the trusted adults are in the building. At the secondary level, counselors provide information to students with the help of peer mentors during lunchtimes. Suicide Prevention and Awareness Lessons take place September through October in our high schools. We have bulletin boards, Post-it notes of encouragement, safety plans, announcements, and information on 988, as you saw in the PSA. They're shared throughout the schools, and we have posters in English and Spanish that are posted throughout the schools that will remain up all year. Next, we have our social media posts. We do track our social media just to make sure that our stakeholders are staying engaged with us. You can see posts with the top, with the most reach, and then our top tweet, of course, is our Teachers of the Year. Our media relations highlighted. And upcoming events, and this takes you all the way through to November 6. So you can see a long list of activities happening throughout the district for the next couple of months. And with that, I will transition to our board recognitions. If our board chair would like to join us with who she would like to have, and our superintendent, and anyone else who she would like to invite down to join us. Galileo, Georgia's Virtual Library, is an initiative of the Board of Regents of the University System of Georgia. Galileo is an online library portal to authoritative, subscription-only information that isn't available through free search engines or internet directories. The Virtual Library held a statewide art contest for students in kindergarten through 12th grades to help celebrate its 30th anniversary. Tonight, we congratulate three artists from General Ray Davis Middle School for placing in the statewide art contest. And we will have their artwork up on the screen when we call their name. But first, I would also like to invite up Joy Woodson with Galileo, who is here, I believe. Joy, come on up, Joy, to be in our photo with us. And also our art teacher, Ms. Katie King, come on up. So our first student won second place in the Galileo 30th Anniversary Art Contest, Morgan Clark. Okay, there we go. And you can see up on the screen Morgan's artwork. Winning third place, Elizabeth Askew. And winning fourth place in this state competition, Riley Tealer. You all are behind me. You're welcome to come up and take photos, either behind me, or we will share them on our social media as well. You can grab them there. So I'm going to take a couple of photos because somebody made the mistake of trusting me to do photos tonight. All right, big smiles, everyone. One, two, three. And let me do one with the camera. Goodness, I'm just going to back up. Don't let me step on you. Okay, we're going to go with the phone. All right, congratulations. This one is just one. It's next one. The High Museum of Art selected 10 students across the state of Georgia to read some excerpts of a book as part of the Faith Ringgold Seeing Children exhibit. All metro Atlanta art teachers could nominate students to be considered for this role. Tonight, we recognize a student from General Ray Davis Middle School who was selected for this honor. His teacher, Mrs. Katie King, said she nominated this student because of his love of art and learning. She says, "He is such a well-spoken young man. His personality is truly one of a kind, and he is inspiring." This student participated in reading an excerpt from the book "We Came to America" by Faith Ringgold that was recorded earlier this past summer and now is part of the exhibit at the High Museum of Art. He was invited to the exhibit grand opening in July, and this was a huge honor to be part of a world-renowned artist exhibit at the High Museum of Art. Please join me in congratulating Jamison Boyd. All right, congratulations. That's all right, I won't do a close-up, don't worry. Cry away. All right. One, two, three. Congratulations, good job. Okay, now our next group. I'm going to draw your attention first to, okay. Our next group is going to be a group of students who attended the Natural Resources Conservation Workshop this summer. Before we get started, though, with recognizing our students, I will play a short video here to tell you a little bit more about it. So, Michael?
With agriculture being Georgia's number-one industry, land conservation plays a critical role in protecting the state's economy. That's why ABAC, along with several partnering agencies from across Georgia, recently hosted the Natural Resources Conservation Workshop. Our Damon Jones was there and shows us how the event gave students a hands-on look at potential career opportunities.
It's been said that experience is the best teacher, and that's exactly what these high school students are receiving at this conservation workshop on the ABAC campus, where they not only get a firsthand look at Georgia's wildlife industry, but also a small taste of the college life.
It can be a huge change when students make that transition from being a student in high school to college. There's a lot more freedom. We want them to realize that you can have fun, but there's also a certain sense of self-responsibility that you have to take into that role to see what it's like. And yes, you can have fun, but there's work involved as well.
We actually brought in about 100 students from all over the state, and they're coming from all different walks of life and all coming down here to get firsthand experiences and knowledge from professionals in the workforce of natural resource conservation.
That knowledge is vital to the sustainability of agriculture here in Georgia, which has always been a major priority with the need for food, fiber, and shelter likely to increase in the coming years.
Because we need that next generation of conservationists because there's a lot of research that says, you know, we can't be, we won't be able to provide the resources and food that we need to our population by 2050 if we don't have more people that are aware that we need those farming acres. We need agriculture to be able to live and continue our lives and take care of our families.
While there are a number of agricultural programs for elementary and college students, that's not the case for rising 10th and 11th graders. And with the majority of those in attendance falling into that group, it's an opportunity to reach students who are just beginning to think about their future.
They can be a little more informed on what direction they might want to go in their career paths because all of us in this career, we know we love our jobs. You know, we know we're happy, and we also know that we're doing good on the landscape, and that feels good. And we just want to make sure that we can keep filling those roles as the resources need it going forward.
With its nationally-recognized Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, ABAC made the perfect site for this event as it provides numerous programs that advance the aspirations of those interested in getting into the field.
We love hosting this event here. We are a practical, hands-on school, and this is a practical, hands-on event. And so our students, whether they're going into ag sciences or natural resources, we are boots-on-the-ground ready, and so we'd like bringing the students here, let them see what kind of small-town atmosphere ABAC can offer. Right now, I currently have about six students in my Forestry and Wildlife Program in our Department of Forest Resources that were from this camp.
Reporting from Tifton, I'm Damon Jones for the Farm Monitor.
Thank you, Michael. So I won't recap. You heard a little bit about the program, but this workshop takes place at ABAC every June, and students scoring well on the workshop exam may be awarded a college scholarship, which includes additional scholarship guidelines and criteria. This week-long workshop features field trips, classroom instruction, and recreational activities. Sponsorships are available each year through local conservation districts for students to attend at no cost. This year, the Rockdale Soil and Water Conservation District, or known as RSWCD, sponsored 16 RCPS students to attend the workshop, which totaled $6,000. This was the largest number of students sponsored by one Georgia conservation district out of 100 attendees. We want to welcome Michelle Connor. You saw her in the video from the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. She coordinates the workshop, along with our very own George Kellecheck from the Rockdale County Soil and Water Conservation District. We want to thank them for their hard work in making this a great opportunity for our students. And at this time, I will invite Michelle Connor and George Kellecheck. If you want to come up and be in our photo, we would like to recognize you. Come on up. Our first student is from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. And this student was awarded a $1,500 scholarship from the ABAC Foundation. She also won the Soil Division Award with the first documented perfect score on the exam. Yeah. All right. And she won the Water Division Award as well, receiving a $25 cash prize for each of these awards. Lastly, she was also given the Merit Award from her advisor, which is awarded to the students that show outstanding dedication and participation. Please join me in congratulating Valeria Gonzalez. Our second student is also from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and Technology. This student won the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission Region Four $1,000 Scholarship and a $25 cash prize. Congratulations to Wei Ang. The following are students who completed the Natural Resources Conservation Workshop from Rockdale County High School, Justin Porter. And our remaining students are all from the Rockdale Magnet School for Science and so I won't keep repeating that, Caitlin Rivera. Dani Donald. Harley Gibson. Jackie Pimentel Martinez. Johnny Davis. Mary Whitley Nelson. Olivia Brumdige. Rebecca Sistrat. Benjamin Fisher. Demi Burrow. Marcus McElroy. Patrick Randall. Ryan Lynn. And Marcus Johnson. You guys did a great job. So yeah, board, we need to squeeze in just a little bit. You all are welcome to come up. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
At this time, we'll take a five-minute recess to congratulate our scholars.
Everybody that seeks. It's time, baby. The time is now 7:55 PM, and I'd like to call the meeting back to order. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. Registered speaker may not sign, assign, or yield their speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with the appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter, or you contend that your legal rights has been violated, we have specific grievance procedure for these matters. Speakers should be professional, and we respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane or vulgar language, and you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupted decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request or comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment cards you completed. I would like to welcome Ms. Jessica Oglesby.
Evening. I'm back. My name is Jessica Oglesby, and I'm, again, a proud parent of one current Rockdale County student and two who graduated. First, I want to thank Superintendent Chester, who called me, followed up, just provided me additional clarity on this process. So thank you for that. I also want to say that I just want to encourage the board to continue hosting the graduation at New Birth. It has proven to be a safe and accessible, a safe, accessible, and family-friendly venue. The location allows us to avoid the challenges of Georgia weather, heat included, while providing ease of access for all families, including those with mobility issues. I also asked the board to consider entering into a multi-year or a non-one-year contract if possible. This could help save money long-term while ensuring consistency and planning. Additionally, having this information early and available to juniors could ease financial burden, could ease financial burden. And they would get the information prior to senior night, so maybe before they graduate, and they don't show up and say, this is how much it costs. And the senior advisors would have that information ahead of time. So with that, I just say thank you for your time and commitment to making a graduation safe, memorable, and accessible celebration for all Rockdale students and families. Thank you.
Next, we'll call Mr. George Kellecheck.
Good evening, Superintendent Board Members, Citizens. This is Michelle Connor, our wonderful spokesperson. And Michelle is based in Villageville, so she drove up this evening for this presentation. And one of the things we're doing across the state is to share our stories. So this information will go back to our Board of Directors throughout the state. Just a few things to add regarding agribusiness. It is our number one industry in the state of Georgia. In 2023, agribusiness provided over $83 billion into the $1.4 trillion Georgia economy. Believe y'all, I think I was here last week, we are hosting to support this initiative, our Urban Gardening and Farming Presentation next Saturday, or next Friday, the 26th, at 8:30 at the Extension Service, and we'll have USDA folks there to explain everything. The average farmer right now is age 65 in the state of Georgia, and the folks that are coming into this business are 47. So it is vitally important that we bring this next generation of students into this type of seminar at ABAK every year. Everybody asked me, how did we get 16 students out of the second smallest county in the state? Well, Michelle was very innovative. She got the emails out to us and all the information in March, I believe. Ms. Cheshire took that email and sent it to all the high school principals, and she probably made a direct call and saying, let's get students there. We also had our Board of Commissioners, our City Council, and the Conyers-Rockdale Economic Development Council folks, getting folks there. It is $375 to send a student to the week-long session, but we think it's worth our while. We spent $6,000 of our budget last year to send those. But if the board or any individual would like to sponsor a student, it's $375, and we provide transportation and food, and they get to learn about the college life while they're there. Also, on this acre program, we are working with Georgia Grown and the Department of Agriculture and looking at funding to keep this acre program going here in Rockdale County. And I'll be with Marty Kemp on Saturday at the Governor's Mansion, participating in the pet adoption day, and also the Georgia Grown Day at the mansion. So we will have our fingers there. So I just wanted to kind of end with that and say thank you all so very much, and we're going to continue on to support Rockdale County School System.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kellecheck? Next, we'll have Ms. Stacy Lewis.
Good evening, DAS. My name is Stacy Mona Lewis, and I am speaking about the graduation venue as well. So my daughter is a junior this year, and regardless if the graduation is onsite or offsite, there's a cost factor, right? So even if it's at one of the high schools, you're going to have to probably have a stage, you're probably going to have chairs, maybe speakers, microphones. There's something that you're going to, there's going to be a cost for that venue, right? Even if it's at one of the three schools. So whatever that cost is for all three schools, I think that money should be allocated, set aside for if the graduating class decides to have the graduation at a different venue. So for example, if it costs $100,000 to have it at New Birth, and the students decide that that's what they want to do, of course, the parents need to help pay for that. However, if it costs $5,000 at each school to host it, and that's $15,000, that $15,000 should be subsidized, paid toward that $100,000. The difference is what the parents should pay. So I don't think that if they decide to have it away, that we should just say we're not going to pay for it at all, because there is going to be a cost if you have it at one of those high schools. So whatever is decided, I just think that we should continue to subsidize it in some kind of way if it is away at an external venue, because there is a cost if you have it at the high school. And I'm talking about this also because my daughter's a junior. So we're going to have to make a decision next year, and hopefully, like one of the ladies just came up and said, hopefully by the end of the school year, the parents will know that we can vote, we can decide if it's going to be onsite, offsite, so that parents can go ahead and fundraise and do what we need to do to make sure that the experience is well if we have it at a different venue. So we need enough time so that we can get together as parents at all three high schools, get some cap tins and fundraising going so that it is subsidized, as well as what hopefully Rockdale will do regarding the graduation. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Now I'd like to turn it back over to Superintendent Chester for updates from her cabinet, followed by her personal updates.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd like to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Joyce Lynn Smith, to come up and provide our financial services update.
Hey, good evening, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members, Superintendent Chesser, Cabinet, and guests. Tonight, we'll be bringing the final financial report for them for August. For August, our revenue was $10.5 million, and at year-to-date, we were at $20.1 million, representing 8.8% of our budget. Last year this time, we were at $10.1 million for the month and $19.6 year-to-date, representing 9% of our budget. Expenditures were $16.4 million, and year-to-date, we're at $35 million, representing 15.1% of our budget. Expenditures last year were $16.3 million for August, $34.8 million year-to-date, representing 15.7% of our budget. Our opening conferences are $4,076,335. Oops. The fund balance is $14,078,187. Last year was $13,377,588. And on our balance sheet, we have assets in the amount of $14,078,187, no liabilities, and therefore our fund balance is also $14,078,187. That completes my financial report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, Board Members, I would like to share that this week has been filled with a lot of meaningful activities that directly align to our strategic plan. I think we heard earlier Mr. Williams from General Ray Davis Middle School talk about the importance and the accomplishments of the band there at one of our middle schools. And what I'll share is that on Tuesday night, Board Chairwoman Jackson Lett and I had an opportunity to attend the band exhibition that was held at Salem High School. And all of our middle school and high school marching bands had a chance to perform, and they really did do an amazing job. So we were very pleased with the talent and then the showcasing that they were able to do. Also this week, we also held our Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council meeting. We held that there at the RCA Cafeteria, and they were able to hear from the executive cabinet members and I about our priorities and the work that we're doing that aligned to our strategic plan. And they also had a chance to have a tour that was conducted by our CTAE Director, Mrs. Johnigan, as well as the RCA CEO and Principal, Dr. Corey Williams. In addition to the Parent Advisory Council meeting, we had a Teacher Advisory Council meeting that Wednesday. The teachers gave a lot of good feedback about the first part of the school year. They gave us some very clear opinions about some things. I know one of the things that they provided to us that was unsolicited was their feedback regarding the Distraction Free Act, and they were all very much in support of that. And so we were able to take that feedback along with some additional thoughts that they had, and we're using that to inform the work that lies ahead. And then we met with our elementary students, and they too had a lot of great things to share. So it's always important for us to hear directly from our students and their thoughts about their school year and what's happening in and outside of their classrooms. So we appreciate that ongoing dialogue. But under a goal area too, which is Student Achievement, Learning, and Growth, one of our action plans in our strategic plan says that we will foster learning environments that empower students towards a successful post-secondary pathway. And so tonight, I just wanted to share some of the initiatives that really exemplify our commitment and action with regard to that. So on Tuesday night, we had at RCA what's called the RCPS Financial Aid Night. And so our lead counselor, Ms. Cobb, along with someone from the Georgia Student Finance Commission, came out and met with families and talked to them about the HOPE Scholarship and also about the FAFSA form, which is that financial aid form. And so events like the one that we had on Tuesday night, which was very well-attended, help our families to navigate that financial process in terms of preparing for that college life. But then today, I actually had a chance to go to two additional events. One was held earlier today at Heritage High School. The second one this afternoon was at Rockdale County High School, and that was the College Probe Day. And that's where we had over 64 colleges and universities that came out to meet with our students and talk to them about their particular school and talk to them about the programs that are offered in the school. So it was exciting to see our students be able in the school. So it was exciting to see our students be able to come out and talk directly with those individuals that were representing the schools. So we were glad to see that, and I was glad to see the engagement that was there. But looking ahead, I also want to share an additional um event that is coming up, and that's on Saturday, September the 27th, is from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and that's called the Rockdale County Public Schools Super Scholarship Saturday. And I want to say that slow because that is a tongue twister. Super Scholarship Saturday that is coming. And this event is designed to provide our families with hands-on support in identifying and applying for those scholarship opportunities. So we not only want our students to go after and apply for the schools, but we, we want to help them find those funding sources that can help pay for that. So parents, I want to say that again, that Saturday, September the 27th, at Heritage High School from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And so our counselors are asking that our students come with their laptops so that they can sit down and provide them with that direct guidance on how to find those scholarships, apply for those scholarships. And I know our Lead Counselor also talked about there would be different tracks, things for our athletes, things for fine arts, and so all of those different areas in which they can actively pursue that. So we want to make sure that our families know about this event, but more importantly, understand that we're here to help them along the way as they prepare for that. So just in closing, I do want to thank Ms. Tanya Cobb. I know she is working very hard to make all of these um events and opportunities possible for our students. But she is um joined by all of the counselors in our buildings. I know I was able to talk with many of them, and they have worked very hard behind the scenes to make these opportunities possible for our students. And I'll say, Board, it wasn't just senior students that were there. We met with juniors, sophomores were there as well. So we want to get them in that thinking early on about the importance of preparing for a college life after school. So Madam Chair, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Superintendent Chesser. The Cabinet has shared presentation on the information section. I kindly ask our Board Members to review the materials provided. The Board has completed its review of the minutes for all meetings held in August. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes that's presented for all August Board meetings? A motion to approve the minutes has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and seconded by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Last week, the Board voted to consolidate several items under a consent agenda. At this time, do I hear a motion to approve all action items presented within the consent agenda?
Second, Justin.
A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Ms. Justin Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved by a 7-0 vote. Under the discussion agenda, do I hear a motion to approve a contract between Rockdale County Schools and New Birth Missionary Baptist Church for the venue for RCPS 2026 graduation scheduled for Friday, May 29th, 2026? A motion has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Vice Chair Janie Jones. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to. So first of all, I want to put it out there, I do intend to support and vote for this. But I do think it's a subject that we should discuss a little bit, because moving forward, I question the ability for us to financially uh for this to be feasible through just senior dues alone. Um, for, this will be the fourth year we will have held uh this graduation at New Birth, started off at $45,000. Uh, the third year, it went to $90,000, and this year is projected at $105,000. At that rate of increase, uh, I am concerned that uh we are nearing a point where senior dues uh will not be able to uh fully fund uh this type of facility, uh, activity uh uh off campus sites. So um I just want us to be aware that as we move forward and these prices increase, that uh Board subsidy is most likely going to be, have to become a reality. And at that point, then I think you will get a lot of public pushback, uh, because we got somewhat public pushback this time. And I explained, explained to those in the public who came to me, first of all, the school system did a survey, and the parents and the students that responded to the survey, survey was a 90% that they wanted the graduation there. Then I asked questions uh of the Superintendent and the staff of the assurity that this was going to be funded by the dues alone, and they had told me they were, they were looking at it differently this year, how they did, they were gonna prioritize the graduation before other things to make sure that it was, because last year, the district did subsidize um the graduation uh last year. There weren't enough funds to fully fund it by uh the graduating class. So my thought process moving forward, as long as it's being funded solely by senior dues, and that's where parents want to have it, I will support it. But moving forward, if the Board has to subsidize the graduation out of county using MNO funds, taxpayers' dollars, at that point, my support will cease. And those are my comments.
Belabor the point that Mr. Cox just made, just said, but I'd agree with what he said, that if we continue to absorb these increases, all it does is incentivize this venue to continue to increase the cost. And there's no pushback from the Board, if there's no discussion of our concern that they're gonna price us out, that we're gonna have to subsidize this graduation with MNO funds, we're gonna get backlash from the community. Um, I, since I've received assurance from the administration, since the students and the parents have given overwhelming uh overwhelming support of the graduation to be held at New Birth with the assurance that it will be paid by the parents and the students, I liken it to prom. The Board doesn't need to get involved in the selection of the students with prom since they're paying for it. If the students are gonna pay for graduation outside of the venue, uh, or outside of the county, I'll drive, I'll go to wherever they want to graduate as long as they're paying for it. I'll, I also want to commend the administration for moving the graduation from Wednesday, that's usually a school day, when the last day of school was Thursday or Friday, to a day uh where teachers can actually attend the graduations if they want to. Uh, I'd heard overwhelming concern, the last few graduations, concerns from teachers that, that they could not go to a graduation and see students that they have mentored because they themselves had to stay in class and, and continue teaching since it wasn't the last day of school. So I want to commend the administration for their efforts in that regard, and with that, I will yield the floor.
How'd you know I wanted to say something? So um I hear these gentlemen, and I, I understand that cost is an issue, but we raise our children from pre-K all the way to graduation, all the way to 12th grade, and we ask them to give us the best of what they have. Why can't we help to subsidize the ultimate celebration of all of their accomplishments? They have reached the pinnacle. Some of them will never go to graduation again, and the decision can't just be if we have to subsidize. What are the other things that we are prioritizing over the excellence of our children? We have to be able to say that. We look at the budget, see where we can cut costs, where we can help to support our students, but we have to celebrate excellence. We gotta let them know that when they get to that pinnacle, we are going to be there with them. And if, if we gotta come out of pocket, $5,000 to make it happen for them, we gotta be able to have these kind of conversations, like you gentlemen said, but it's not a if and then. If, it is a conversation of when we get there, let's see how we can work with the parents, the community, to make sure that we are celebrating this moment. Some of them will never have it again. Some of these parents will never see this again. How much do we struggle with kids that are dropping out of school? How much resource do we put into safety net programs, right? So how do we now question whether we can celebrate the excellence of those who have made it all the way from kindergarten to 12th grade? I will always be that person that say, let's celebrate our students. Let's find the money, and let's celebrate our students in the way that they deserve to be celebrated.
I think that um Heather spoke everything that I was thinking of. As a current parent of a senior, um, I, I, I feel as though the, this school should be willing to support a graduation. As a matter of fact, I think it's the school's responsibility to provide a graduation for the students. This student of mine has been in this school district since pre-K3, and I would like to think that not only me, but the staff in the school district feel like she has contributed to the success of this school district. And so for those reasons, um, I want her celebrated, and I want the school to celebrate her, not just her, but her peers as well. And so I am in support of supporting these students, and if there is a need to help make this possible, I'm willing to do so. Thank you so much, everyone.
Good evening. Um, I agree. Thank you, Heather, for those comments. Thank you, Pam, um, and even Kenny, and I'm Larry, for your feedback. Um, I, I heard the parents, and I agree that um we need to make it accessible for all, all family members. We also need to um look forward. I like the suggestion that you made, Ms. Oglesby, um, Ms. Oglesby, that um we plan ahead. Give them those dollar amounts ahead of time so it's not sticker shock um come September, uh, March, uh, whenever, but let's look ahead and try to make sure that they understand what those costs are. I agree. Um, I don't have a problem subsidizing the cost of graduation. These kids work hard, they're in extra activities, they fundraise, they do a lot of things for this school district. And to pay the cost of having a graduation, I think, I don't think it's a surprise that we offset some of those costs. I think we've always offset some of those costs uh for those kids who cannot afford to pay for graduation fees. So um I am in support of having it at New Birth. Um, I am supportive of having it inside always, because it is hot outside, and I would like to always have it inside if we can for the students to make sure that they're comfortable, their families are comfortable, and um, and we're comfortable. So um I am in support of um having it at New Birth um as well.
Ms. Jones?
I guess I will speak. So as a Board Member, um, let's, we're gonna go back to the beginning of the whole graduation conversation. I simply ask for transparency in sharing the details related to graduation um to the parents and to the students, and also giving them a voice in that planning process. So I definitely appreciate Superintendent Chesser for seeing that a survey went out. And one of the things that I was going to do, which, which I am doing now, is supporting, supporting the results of that survey. Overwhelmingly, the parents and the students selected New Birth. And regarding whether or not we're gonna subsidize, I agree with Ms. Palmer. Um, let's plan early, and if that is something that needs to take place, guess what we're gonna do? We're gonna cross that bridge when we get there. We're gonna have that discussion when we get there, but I'm not gonna pick up about that tonight. That's it.
Just one thing to add, that's when we're worried about teacher attrition and retaining teachers, I, I, I agree with everything that Ms. Duncan said. Um, but my thought process is that if we spend $100,000 in frivolity, that is 100 teachers that don't get $1,000 raise. So that is my thought process when I'd make comments about the additional costs and the continued escalation of that cost. I'd, I'd agree with you, Ms. Duncan, that students need to be celebrated, but if we can keep, if we have to subsidize, if we can keep that money in Rockdale County, I think that would give us goodwill toward the stakeholders and taxpayers in this county. But I am going to support uh this proposition for the um graduation to be at New Birth this year.
Thank you. I would like to say I want to thank Ms. Chesser as well, because that was one thing that I, my concern was that we need to hear from the families. Uh, and I'm okay with going to New Birth as long as we're gonna have everything available for all students, because we know transportation may be an issue, but we want to make sure everything is covered for these kids to get to that graduation. So I appreciate you doing the survey. It came out 90%, even though parents say other things, but it said 90%. So we have to support that. Uh, I support, I heard everything that everyone said. I agree with a lot of everything that was said. Um, and planning early would be great. Uh, and we just know we have to put, as well as the school district, the family also have to put their priorities in order to say, okay, we know this is what gonna happen. We definitely want to celebrate, and we want to celebrate them to, to the highest height, but we want to just make sure that we do what's applicable for all students. So once again, I'd like to just say thank you, Ms. Chesser, for that survey that I've been asking for since the first year they took it to New Birth, because I want to hear what the parents and the students had to say. So thank you for your leadership. Any other further discussion? If not, at this time, can I get a motion? After discussion? We already had the motion. Ms. Heather Duncan motion, Mr. Ms. Janie Jones seconded. We had a discussion, so all in favor? A 7-0 vote. So the Rockdale County Public School graduation will be held this year again at New Birth Missionary Baptist Church on May 29th, 2026. And parents, we see you all applauding, so let us figure out how we're gonna make it to continue to happen. Um, because it, it is a sticker, sticker shot once you get there, but it is what it is. So it's a 7-0 vote. As there is no further business to address, do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? So move who? Seconded by? A motion has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and seconded by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The meeting is concluded at 8:26 with a 7-0 vote. You all have a good night.